I'd like to call the May tenth regular session of the Council of Orders. You will stand for the place of allegiance of our representative.
For the allegiance of the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Ms. Knight, for assisting. We appreciate that. And approval of the April twenty-sixth regular meeting minutes and April twenty-sixth work session minutes. Do I have the authority? Any discussion? Hearing them, do I hear a motion to approve?
To me, we don't have a plan. So... So, what section with the minute? There was a... The action to have the legal assistant to draft the resolution and it's not recorded in the minutes. The minutes say the discussion had the minute minutes go and it dropped out. The action. So, I'm asking the council to add that into minutes. And the reason is that for the public benefit and for government transparency, let's say this. If we don't have it recorded, anything that I wrote during the discussion. Now, we know, let's hope this not happen, but if accidentally happen and the execution doesn't follow through the directive. How we going to reference to if this directive not be called? It's really hard on the channels for us, the governments. Have what decision, decision, right? That decision never been recorded on directive that we have to see to do. We don't get that recorded. And for public benefits, it gives the government transparency. Public sometime they, due to they, with their schedule, they might not be able to come to meeting. But if our minute minutes, we thought what happened in the meeting. It would help us to understand what we decided during meeting and how it will.
Do I have the motion to amend the minutes? Do I hear a second?
This was my...
An absolute motion. Do I hear a second?
Okay, then I am back for the discussion. So, now what's my motion? So, I am going to make a motion.
Okay.
A man motion to add the verbatim language to the minute minutes for April twenty-sixth. To record the request for legal system to grab the resolution to have the remark after the vote in the minute minute.
As stated, Councilwoman Tran wants to amend the minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
No.
I vote aye as well. Most in favor.
I made a very motion to record the verbatim language below in the minute minutes for the work session in April twenty-four. The mayor has found that the request would not be executed.
Are you agreeing with that? Do I hear, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded to amend the work session minutes. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
I made a very important motion to add the verbatim language to the minute minutes for the work session, April twenty-sixth.
Do I hear a motion?
Council, I have no... To clarify, if the mayor have the authority to control how the minute minutes will be recorded.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Yes.
I vote no. Most in favor. Going back to the original, April twenty-sixth minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So...
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
No.
Ms. Tran?
May the minute minutes fail to record the legal request to get the... To get the resolution prepared to introduce to the council body.
I vote aye. Most in case. Approval for staff recommendation to purchase sanitation cans from SSI Shaper in the amount of ninety-four thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars on its last twenty-twenty. Somebody said it was capital or something?
Capital.
Capital.
Aye.
And authorized the mayor to execute the agreement and other related documents. Heard that in the work session. Any discussion? Hearing them, do I hear a motion to approve?
So...
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Most in case. Approval for the staff recommendation to accept proposal from AmerisBank to move various city accounts per service fee of four hundred and eight dollars and thirty-five cents a month. This is a savings of fifteen hundred and two dollars and thirty-five cents a month. And ultimately eighteen thousand dollars and twenty-eight cents, uh, eighteen dollars and twenty-eight dollars and twenty cents a year. And authorized the mayor to execute the agreement and other related documents. We've had a discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing them, do I hear a motion to approve?
The council, during the presentation, I have requested to get a copy of the RFP for the source to be forwarded to me because it's not included in the... The package.
As stated, motion to approve. Second. Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Most in case. I believe item number three is being deferred. For some further information, item number four is being deferred for contract. Item number four, please. Approval number five, item to approve the purchase of a drum, DGI number two, from Resco for applications including capturing images for advanced crash scenes, land survey, power service, upper camel in the amount of seven thousand two hundred forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. And authorized the mayor to execute the agreement and other related documents as presented by the IT department. Other discussion? Hearing them, all those in favor say aye. Or do I hear a motion to approve?
So...
Do I hear a second? Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Approval in format of meeting minutes to follow Georgia State Code fifty dash fourteen dash one. And authorized the mayor to execute the agreement and other related documents.
Not a matter, maybe we have to need to take that motion off because there are no agreement for him to execute this manner. So, please record that in that motion would add the override.
As stated, do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Could we open to the discussion?
Sure.
Okay, so what does mean to approve the format of the minute minutes following the state code?
Is it available to the public? Sir, thank you. That's my ask. Clarification, please. In the back of the room, you will find... Technically, it's an attorney-client privilege. We're going to waive that by releasing it. It's in the back. And it's a legal opinion from the city attorney. Specifically spelling out what the state law is and what the requirements are for the city, which you do follow. There's also a section in your city chart that talks a little bit about the same thing, which you do follow. So, when we say... Fairly simplistically, actually, you follow Georgia state law. We just actually mentioned here what it is. It's printed for you so that you have a copy. The public has a copy. The city council has had several copies in the past. But being, seems to be some confusion as to what that means. Now, provided it for you.
Okay, so the code say, says in here, looking at, it say the minute minutes have to be included in a description of each motion and other proposal made. Have we been recorded the motion in a way it's been made? Uh, we summarize and left off the main meaning of the motion. Are we going to have that practice and that, or are we going to do? This last time I did ask specifically to reveal how the motion were called and reveal how the motion were recorded. And I did not get a clear answer or have not seen a piece of legal advice or professional.
Last I checked, that's about as close to a legal opinion as you're going to get.
So, in that case, what will practice the council want to do moving forward now? Is that saying follow the Georgia code? Are we going to, are we continuing to keep the practice that we have been having for the past two years? Recording the remark following the vote in the minute. Are we to do it randomly?
I'm going to guess that we're going to follow the state law.
I'm asking for the specific question on the procedure that he will go to agree to follow. And that question is, are we going to record the remark following the vote in the minute minutes coming up?
Most of the city council votes, which we're going to follow the state law.
We have, we have already discussed this, like, and at this point, I'd like to say we have had the advice of our city attorney and I'd like to follow that advice, our legal advice.
I would like to follow the advice, but however, the advice come to council without seeing how the question being raised. So, we don't know what circumstance that we should apply to. The legal advice for that, um, in the attorney language in that the minute minutes cannot be changed by the council email and it have to come to the vote. And for that, I have to relieve that file for the approved minute minutes. Once the minute minutes been approved, no council member can have that change without the agree approval of the vote, of the entire council body. But before there, if this is called a draft, council member have to approve that draft. And if they see a missing point and they're not able to say, oh, hey, uh, here, the discussion point that we missed recorded, then what are we approving for? Because if that we just sitting there and take what I would just give you then what the improvement need really need?
Let, um, let's bring this part up. The, the, um, minute minutes has to be approved by the council. And it's, it's has been controlled by the mayor. Submit email to him until he like it been written the way he like it. So... The law is the law, but the matter is using different, you the... You can, you can, the law require the minimum requirement be written in a minute minutes. But the man tell me, who does have the authority to control the minute minutes? Why does the mayor have the authority to control the minute minutes? It is record that it been sent back to the mayor until he okay with it, meaning he controlling it, not the council. I heard, I, I heard the advice from, from, from the city attorney that that we cannot fix or whatever a procedure, if it's this after it's been approved. But before it's been approved, it's being controlled by somebody. It, it not the, it's a matter pick and choose. Whatever, why that one person to choose to show what a minute minute or not, that's the man thing. It's not the way that the requirement of the law has no problem right there. The problem is why are we allowed? One person have the authority on, he doesn't have authority, but allow one person to control what's going there. That's why we keep it. It's not a confusion. It definitely not a confusion, okay? But what's going there controlled by the mayor? And we cannot agree with the way he pick and choose what's going there now. The past two year, it was okay. Until this year. Why is that? I'm making it very clear that it's, it's not, it's not whoever showing it or whatever showing it at the minute minute, but the way that one person don't have the legal authority to control it. That's the man problem. It's no confusion right here. Just to make it clear, thank you.
Any other comments? I'm not hearing them. Do I hear a motion to approve? In this case, were the motions to approve item number six, to follow the Georgia State Code and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and other related documents.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded.
With the mayor, to record the minute minutes, there are no authorization for the mayor to execute agreement. There are no agreement here to execute. So, we should see record the motion because the motion have to have been recorded in the minute minutes to the discussion has the most meaning.
Point noted. Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
No.
Ms. Tran?
I understand my vote because I still cannot get a clearly clarification whether we can continue to consistent practice the methodology that the council have been doing to keep the remark, to, to record the remark after the vote.
I vote yes. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two oh two pay scale allocation chart, we actually wrote it on that last time. But it turns out, we removed a very interesting sentence. And it was a sentence that says authorize the mayor to execute the document and any other related documents. Well, it turns out, I didn't need to sign something. So, now it's back before you. And we won't make that decision again. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion to approve?
So...
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
You carried it, and this last time I carried you in, so it's a second. General comments was, was that one, I think the one was a lose. Is that not correct? So, sorry. The one item?
Who did you take essentially? Yes.
Comments for the citizens?
Okay. I have been coming to these meetings every Tuesday since I retired from the military in one February twenty-twelve. And never have I experienced so much discord within this council meeting. God knows my big yellow sign. Let everybody know when election for mayor was what my feelings were. But that time has come and gone. We got a mayor. We have council members and you need to start working together. This is ridiculous, this constant thing. These notes have been the same since every Tuesday of the second month, I mean, the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday. Martina, you do a wonderful job and I thank you. I don't know how you put up with it. I would have gray hair falling out all over the place. I'mma tell you, this is ridiculous. You need to go over it. If you have a lawyer, come in not once, twice, speak to you, please listen to her. That's why she's getting paid our tax dollars. Mayor, do you have any, any problems with our support to you?
Uh, no.
Thank you. We are here to support each one of you. Myo cannot survive if we don't start working together. That's all I'm going to take. This has got to stop because it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Other comments? A little fun?
Go ahead, Bon. Now, go ahead.
You don't know for a call?
Yeah, um...
He comes in the fourth seat and then, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I have to concur with Lana. It was pretty bad from where we sit down here. But that was not my issue. My issue was the sanitation. Because, you know, we have had quite a good transition. And many of us had to drop by our own cans after it was advanced disposal or whatever. You know, and they were expensive. They were a hundred dollars, I mean, a hundred fifty gallons. And so, you know, it's great that we're going to get cans and all. And the other thing, I think Mr. Qua raised the fact that there has been an uptick in people just bringing their cans to the front, but the people haven't been putting them back. They'll put mine back because I'm out there helping them. So, if we have a can and if, or we didn't have to pay extra for the cans that we already have, because where you may not have any trash, I have a big trash. That's getting time. I could fill up three hundred fifty gallon can. So, the thing is, is that we're going to be paying extra for the can that we already have if we still have them up. So, that really wasn't clear to me. And I wanted to know a little bit more about that, you know, as to if we already have a can, you know, or we paying extra for the new can or for the, if the trash be picked up with the can, you know, if you have, you know. So, that's what I kind of need to get some clarification on because, you know, we need to know. And I thought that Councilwoman Tran did have a great idea about just putting some of that information right on the can so people don't forget. You know, folks like me can sort of lose their memory and stuff, so that, that be a big help. Thank you.
You got it. Watch that.
I think Brad could look at that one, so.
I, yeah.
I took some notes from what we spoke about earlier in the work session about the ninety-five gallon and getting the quotes on the additional can that would equal out to that one fifty. Uh, we'll have to work together to see, anything over that one fifty, we would have to charge for that additional can. I mean, I know right now we're allowed to have one fifty. So, anything over that, we can speak about that later. When I bring that back up to the council about the smaller can, we can, we can work on those numbers. Have some discussions, see what we need to make that work.
What's the price that they just literally wanted a second?
Was it?
Fifty?
Fifty for the can?
Well, that's for...
Fifty?
That's just a cost.
That is a cost.
What she's asking is how much for the service, right? Does that change it among the services?
I would expect you'd have to pay for the second can.
So, right now with that?
Are you talking about the physical can itself or are you talking about the service?
No, I mean, you know, if we have a second can, we're going to have to pay extra for that pick up.
As long as it's under the hundred and fifty gallons, it's kind of, the second can that we're talking about, get the quotes for would equal out to that hundred and fifty gallons with the, the ninety-five gallon there and then the additional can to equal out to a hundred and fifty. So, that would be your hundred and fifty that you're paying for now.
Sanitation is enough to, you know, give you some partner in this last, you know, six months, three years. The world's chance. The cans themselves become a portion of ultimately the final solution that we can, we're going to have final solution and told a little bit further down the road, but we're we're reviewing some answers. I think that might change the answer. I don't have, give me a good one for you at this point.
Okay, well, maybe next time, you know, we'll, we'll have some answers to it. Because my can is already a hundred fifty gallon, so if you give me another one, I'll be over there and I want to pay extra and I'm still waiting now. And it will go back. But this is all good, council.
Ms. Chair?
It's progress.
Ms., Ms. Harden?
The way I understand the Georgia law is there is a, if there's a tie vote with the council, then the mayor breaks the tie. That's the Georgia law. So, I have seen the Georgia law being followed tonight, whether certain council members like it or not. And then I also understand that the Georgia law says if there is a criticism of another council member, that's not to be done in public. So, if I'm wrong, let me know. But that's just what I have read.
Ms. Chair?
I already told you, I gotta have a smaller can. That can's too big for me, for the garden. My one bag is all I got. Uh, I'm quite sure that everybody in here got a little memo from the county assessor's office this week with their tax property going up. Did we get the two hundred thousand exemption passed?
The governor signed it and the city attorney is going to make the, the legal part because we have to take it back to one of, we weren't able to do it this time. Go, I think he signed it on the eighteenth or something like that.
Because it's not reflected in this little piece of paper.
That one right there is basically
Yeah.
A statement, right?
Right.
Let's just say it's above, well, below two hundred thousand, you know, the answer doesn't matter, right? Because that will pass. Now, it has to pass. We have to take it in November. I believe when this budget is passed, it will be taken into consideration that based on a sixty, forty percent of last time, that, that'll be reflected in our, our property tax number. And that should take place before your tax bill was set.
Right.
Got to finish.
This is ridiculous.
But you couldn't get it this one. And there's, there, it used to be, we could just kind of pick and choose whatever they wanted to have an election, but you can't do that anymore.
So, it should reflect on the actual tax bill that we're going to get, not the assessment?
I'm gonna, I wanna, it depends on, on when that vote comes through, right? So, you've got an election right now, but there's...
So, we have to put it back on the ballot again?
You do. Um, it absolutely does.
So, then it won't account? So, then it won't account for this year?
It depends on when that election date is held and that's what the city attorney's working on.
We're, we're trying to get it in November because we're past the deadline for this one, for the primaries, so because of November, then it should reflect.
But there is a runoff date, there's a requirement for a runoff center. And that might have been the door for us to do it earlier. But again, there are very prescribed dates and that's all you get. So, but legal has it, good news is, um, a tremendous amount of effort, might have through to get it through both the state house, the senate, all of our local delegation signing off on it and ultimately the, uh, the governor to sign it. So, that was a combination of Democrats and Republicans and everybody in this county, folks in the city working together. Not an easy process to get things through the state, but we did. And, uh, Ms. Knight and, uh, some others were very helpful in that, so we appreciate that, we believe in that, George. And we just need to, uh, now it's in your hands. We need some primary votes.
I don't wanna have to take the test.
Yeah, and just remember, whenever they write these things, they have a tendency to write it in such a way that it's hard to understand. So, you just have to kind of wait until it's written and, and you have to say, is that a yes or is that a no from a standpoint of implementation? And then that's what we have to promote. And the, the city itself will not be able to promote that, but you will. And, uh, on average, if, if your house was right in that market for one fifty to two hundred, you saved yourself a hundred and fifty dollars. So, that's what's worked here.
Okay, I got one more.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't see that we can waste anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes every work session and council meeting combined discussing the darn minutes. Over half of the citizens in this room have asked a mayor, I mean, a, an attorney, he said, the minutes do not have to be word for word, it is a consensus of what went on. And this needs to go away, needs to get dropped. We're tired of it.
Other comments?
I agree. We're tired. We sit out here and we listen to that same thing every week and actually, the, the municipal, I hope I'm saying it right, says you will avoid personal attacks against another council member up there and that's just not appreciated with our sound here.
Other comments? Comments from the council? Ms. Tran?
Yes. None of the, uh, debates should have happened regarding the minimum minutes. It is keep the practice consistently that we, with the method we already have in place for two years. Uh, adding a few seconds at the remark, following the vote, you must like to ask. And thus, the communication between the elected official to the constituent to understand why that decision will make in a certain way. And I, at the end of the day, that will be beneficial to the public. If before governments, to study, the public have the right to understand why is that my council member, certain council member, they're not supporting this idea and adding few technical sentences in explaining why the vote doesn't go in a different ways, that would be helpful. And none of the discussion that dragged in that long, this long should have happened if we keep the consistent practice. When I ask for that, it will advise that the method, I'm asking for the change in the method and it require the council vote to change the method. But it wasn't, I wasn't asking for changing the method. Instead, I'm asking for the consistency of practice of the method that happened in the process. I also ask for the minimum minutes that reflect that when, if the council meant that decision to change that method, it never been provided to me. I would advise that were the council policy to written the, uh, to have the minute written in a certain way. And I also ask to, for, for a couple of minutes, uh, about policy, so we all understand to follow that policy that we didn't give them provided either, it is happening over, over that style. So, we're here, it's not for any, uh, personal agenda or purpose. We are here to present, uh, a, um, these selected, by the taxpayer, to do their job, to do the job that they want us to do, which is come with fiduciary, how we make the decision on behalf of their, uh, on their behalf of the tax followers that we have been connected to them. So, all of that come to the end of that government transparency that we try to try to. Thank you.
Ms. Qua? No comments? Ms. Knight?
No comments, please.
Ms. King?
Yes, I, um, I appreciate all of your comments. Um, I do agree that as council members, we need to do the work that we're doing for the citizens and not continuously stay on a subject that has been already addressed by legal counsel. That is why we have, uh, city attorney and I think we need to follow that advice.
Normally, we respond to it, it seems to be my lucky day. You know, we, we, we work with the states where you're passing legislation and we follow and track that legislation. There's a, there's a website out there, you can follow it yourself, just to see where it was, what committee it was in and, and how that happened. You will find that in both the state house as well as the state senate, the only thing that you'll be able to read is who was present, whether they voted yes or no, what the final tally was, and then where it was transferred if it passed, second of the senate and ultimately the senate to vote. You will find that every action the city council takes requires three votes. It's just that simple. You can get pretty much anything you want if you have three votes. But you have to have three votes. If you don't have three votes, that means your motion failed. It's just that simple. I think you will see, and as we stated, we're pretty free with letting people talk. We're not holding anybody to some time frame or really even getting a whole lot of feedback, you know, with whatever your opinion is. So, you're entitled to your opinion. That doesn't necessarily mean other people have to respond to it. It just means you're gonna work together to get things done. Once you have your say, if you will, your call request, put it to a vote, end of story. And that is what the law requires and that is what is reflected in the minutes.
She and I, I didn't have a comment, but, um, she and I, uh, she and the mayor have said something and, um, I'd like to, uh, respond to it. It's, we all understand what the law requires. The main focus there is if the mayor would let go controlling what's going to the minimum minutes, it would be fine. It's not a one man show. I mean, and that's similar, if I did let it go the way, the way it naturally goes, whatever it is, but just not, he does not have the authority to control it. And if he let it go, let city club do her job, we would be fine.
And another piece I'm going to add here, another piece of the law requirement on the open, open act is say, we have to record, we have to get a description of the motion. And let's just, um, see how the description of the motion is recorded in the minimum minutes, in the next, uh, in the minimum minutes from now on. Thank you.
I think we still have one item on the work session, is that now? Software integration, have you had that?
No, we didn't. Just a brief comment that, uh, software integration's going very well. Uh, all the data was transferred in the last ten years into the new financial software seamlessly, no problem. So, just want to report on that, that it's going well and, uh, we've had no hiccups whatsoever. And their staff is here making sure everybody understands that it's going extremely well. We're very pleased with it.
Other comments? Read it, ma'am.